Recording in progress.
Okay, I call to order the meeting of the Joint Planning Commission and City Council Work Session for Monday, March 6, 2023 at 5:15 PM. A call of order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation on the ground, indivisible, infinite, endless.
We'll now have the roll call.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Hansaker.
Here.
Commissioner Bunch has an excused absence. Commissioner Barcalmio.
Here.
Commissioner Riles. Commissioner Verba. Commissioner Neparud. Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
And Commissioner Green.
Here.
I have Counselor Newton.
President.
Counselor Novak. Counselor Montague.
Here.
Counselor Kopczynski. Counselor McGee.
President.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Johnson II.
Here.
All right. Thank you. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Matthew. It's your game.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors and commissioners. So tonight is a continuation of a discussion that we started on February 13th. Just a reminder, at the last joint session we had on the 13th, we talked about a couple different options for parking reform. And overall, the group, the commission and the councilors gave us direction to move towards Option A, which was basically the remanding of parking requirements. And that's, so now we're at the step of talking about some policy decisions that we need some direction on as we look at amending our development code and some of our comp plan policies. You have to, excuse me, I'm kind of getting over cold, so. So we'll step through some of the parking reform discussion and some of those, the policies and guidance, or areas that we need guidance on tonight, should go pretty quickly. And then I've got about eight or nine slides, and then Beth Freeland will come on at the tail end to talk about some of our comp planning policies and goals that need some updated. So with that, Caitlin's going to put on my PowerPoint, and we'll jump right in. So I can go right to the next slide. There we go. So I wasn't going to do a lot of background. We're, obviously, we're here for the climate-friendly, equitable communities is the kind of the next step in that process. So with parking reform that we're looking at, one of the things that we have to consider is bicycle parking standards. And 100% of any new bike parking must be covered except for retail and industrial uses. So the policy question we have is what percentage of bike parking should be covered for retail and industrial? We have a staff recommendation of 50, but looking at this group for discussion input.
I have a question on this one. Would, would you guys recommend that the cargo size be covered? Because that wasn't, it didn't really specify in the recommendations.
And that's certainly up for discussion, but I think when we talk about bicycle parking, that in general, we would include the cargo bike. You know, the next question down is how much of that bicycle parking should be for the family-sized or cargo parking? So that, certainly based on concerns that we heard previously from Counselor Newton, was that those spots be covered. That's a consideration. So in the, this first, the first piece of this, when we say what percent of the bike parking should be covered for retail and industrial uses, we recommend 50%, I would include that cargo bike piece in that.
I would also think that that should be covered.
What's the reason why the 50% is at all?
Well, it would be, with some cost involved, obviously, when you provide cover spaces, it's a little bit more. 50% is a number that staff threw out there based on research that we did for what other jurisdictions have done, found it to be a fairly balanced number. If this group decided they wanted to use more or less, that's certainly something that we get to choose.
So on the picture, they're going to have to be a lot bigger than that, right? Because they need to be secured in two separate spots, right? Is that their goal?
As far as the secured bike parking, if you're going to have, whether they be just kind of the rolling spots, or how somebody would lock the bike up, we haven't got into the design details of how, what those types of facilities would look like yet, or if we're going to be that prescriptive, excuse me, of mandating or prescribing in our code that it'll have to be a certain style of bicycle parking.
Okay, I thought I read that they wanted to have them secured in two separate spots. So you're going to have to have enough room for somebody to be able to maneuver the whole, around the whole bicycle, you know, in order to. It doesn't look like there's a lot of room between them. Right, and I'm saying they're going to have to be bigger than that.
Yeah, if, if the, this group would like to consider requiring something as far as a specific style of bicycle parking, as far as the locking mechanism, you know, I think staff would recommend against doing that. It just, it's going to be added cost, where if you've got a retailer or industrial user that wants to provide that, they certainly can. There wouldn't be anything that says they can't provide that.
I saw some that were hanging. So that would be a lot less cover. Right, right, oh no, you know, not, not all of them, but I saw some that are hanging. I thought, well, that's kind of cool if you could, you know, hang them.
Is it likely that the design and construction of the uncovered portions would be easily converted if the use warrants that, if they become regularly used?
Well, I think the important thing to remember when we're, when we're talking about these standards specifically is we're talking about private facilities. So these are our private businesses that we, staff's opinion would be to not be too prescriptive in describing a particular way that they have to construct the spaces themselves as far as being able to lock them. That's going to start to drive that cost way up for them if we're really prescriptive on it has to be this exact style. So we're, we're basically saying you have to provide X percentage, X percentage of these spaces covered, and the spaces themselves. How they provide that, we're not getting into the fine details and letting the developer or the owner decide what they want to provide.
Okay, I just read that in the packet, so that's what I was wondering, if that was going to be so. I know that if somebody comes up and they are bringing their bicycle, they're definitely going to want to go for the covered area first.
So the, does a 50% number sound pretty good to everybody? Okay. Excuse me. So as far as the percentage of bicycle parking sized for family or cargo sized, you know, staff's recommending about 25% of that, that bicycle parking that's provided be for cargo and family styles. That number sound pretty good to everybody as well? Okay, next slide, Caitlin. All right, so on to parking. So when parking is, as we, we talk about parking reform, and we've eliminated the requirement for, for a minimum number of parking spaces. So a development could come in and not put in a single parking space. In that rare occurrence, very rare, I think, the city is able to require them to provide an ADA space. And, and the question is, is when an ADA, one ADA space can be required, or should we ask for an ADA space be required in those situations? You know, the ADA space requirements currently are driven based on building code and the number of spaces that are required, number of parking spaces required for a site. So if you put in 10 parking spaces, you have to put in one ADA space, and it's based on a percentage. So it's, if they don't provide any parking, they don't have to provide an ADA space. What we're saying, out of the discussion we had last time, they need to provide at least one. So that, that's kind of where we're headed now, is that they would be required to put in one space, and that ADA space could be required, or could be provided in an on-street or in the right-of-way for areas like in downtown. And just wanting for a general consensus that that sounds good to everybody.
I have all the questions again. So on this one, it looked like you were kind of baking in a, the community development director could determine that that wasn't necessary. Could we also put in there, could also determine more is needed? Because could we have a scenario where, you know, there's, there's a facility that probably would cater to people that, more people that would need to have those spaces and maybe wouldn't provide enough? I don't know if that's too vague for the developers, but I was just thinking, there might be a scenario where we would want them to have more than just one.
The, it, it's a great point, and I think it's, there's, there's a challenge there when we start to add in, like, it's a, it's a little bit too subjective, especially to put on the role of the director, to say, oh, well, I, I have the power to say, well, no, you need to provide five spaces because of your type of use. You would, we, we hope based on the type of uses, they know their need, and they would be providing the extras. We're, we're looking at the very, probably very rare times where a new development is done, that they're not going to provide any parking. And in an area like downtown, where there isn't parking required, we can say, you need to provide one. And whether it's, if it's like, not in a non-downtown area, we can make them provide one ADA parking space, which isn't a huge stretch. If it is in the downtown area, then we have the ability to say, you need to provide one, and we can, you can provide that in one of the spaces already provided, you know, on the street. But it does provide that, that language where if it's not feasible for the site, that ultimately we, we can use some common sense as the director and make the call and say, geez, I'm not going to make you put in one space and a driveway entrance and all this other stuff for one ADA space when it doesn't make any sense, so.
So you were talking that this space could be provided in the right-of-way. Are you talking about taking a space that would normally be a non-ADA parking spot and turning it into an ADA parking spot?
That's what we'd be talking about. So it, just, even if you looked outside the door here, if City Hall were a new development and said, and we said, hey, you, you need to provide an ADA space, then it, it would allow for them to, with approval from Public Works, and Ron, I can feel his eyes piercing into the side of my head, that that space could potentially be converted, that on-street space could be converted into an ADA. Now, Ron's going to tell us, he's going to come up here any second, that change of that space could require council approval, and that's something that, as we work through these code requirements, we'll have to beef that up a little bit and describe what that process looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Can you clarify for the removal of the parking and doing one ADA space? Is that going to be just for businesses and commercials, or does it also apply for residential areas, so like, you know, apartments, mixed housing?
So that's going to be for res, well, commercial, commercial and industrial and residential above five units.
So in larger units, we only will have an exemption for one ADA parking spot, then?
So in those cases, with the decisions that we, we made at the last meeting, we've said parking's no longer required, right? So if somebody says, say you built a 20-unit apartment complex, and you're not going to provide any parking associated with that, that's going to be challenging to get tenants. But so we don't anticipate, like I say, this is probably very rare that it occurs. But in those cases, it gives us the, the opportunity to say, you have to provide one space, at least one.
So do you feel like there could be wiggle room in a residential area if there's more than 20 spaces that we can then require two ADA spots?
If they're, if they're going to provide more than, if they're providing any parking whatsoever, then the building code kicks in and the ADA requirement based on the number of spaces provided or the number of units. If that makes sense. So there's, if no parking is required, they don't have to provide an ADA space. If they provide one regular space, now they have to provide an ADA space. And as, as the more regular spaces they provide, the more ADA spaces they have to provide. There's, there's a, there's a percentage there.
Yeah, I just wanted to ensure, because if we, you know, have larger areas, you know, the ADA is in place for a reason, because many companies have not historically provided them. So we want to make sure that while we're addressing these changes, that we can accommodate those with visibility.
In, in a situation, if you had a big, whether it be residential or retail or commercial, where they provided, you know, 100 parking spaces, they don't get away with just providing one ADA space. There's a develop, the, the building code would say, no, you have to provide, I don't know the exact percentage, but you'd have to provide X number of spaces, and it's more than one.
Great, thank you.
Yep. All right, I think we'll go to the next slide. Okay. So electrical vehicle charging capacity. And just to make sure we define what capacity means before we start the discussion. Capacity means the installation of conduit to supply, well, installation of conduit to the space is, is the capacity. And the, the power capacity, so verifying that there's adequate power supply to the site or available, not necessarily, you're not running the cables, it's just the conduit. So when it gets to the point of if they ever required to put in EV chargers or want to put in EV chargers, they don't have to tear up an entire parking lot to install it. So this is just installation of conduit when we, excuse me, when we talk about providing EV charging capacity, it's just conduit. So with that, when we, as we're still kind of talking about ADA spaces, what percentage of the ADA or van pool spaces should be provided that charging capacity? Our current recommendation is 50% of the ADA spaces in residential and mixed-use developments with five or more units, and then 10 to 25% of ADA and carpool-van spaces in non-residential units. So that's, of those ADA spaces that are, we've just talked about that they'll be required to provide, how many of them should be provided this EV charging capacity? And our recommendation is 50 in that, that residential development, and, or 50% of them, and then 10 to 25 in non-residential.
I think that 50% for the residential mixed-use areas is a great start, because the state requirement is 40%, so that's above that. I do think that the 25% for non-residential developments, I think, would be a better goal. Just sharing my opinion.
Is this based off the trends that you saw in the nearest jurisdictions, that you guys looked at these specific numbers for the ADA carpool-van space?
Correct. Where there was information available through comparables and what other jurisdictions have done, you know, this is, a lot of this is, is new for major jurisdictions. So we're, we're looking at what information is out there, and this, this is based on the information that we found, or if we haven't been able to find anything, it's an educated guess of what we think should, should work.
This doesn't differentiate between the high-voltage DC fast charger and the level two, 220 volt. Is that, I mean, is, which, which is required, and when you say running the conduit to the site, is one or the other, or does it matter? Or is it just anything, either type count as power to the site?
I, to be perfectly honest, I haven't gotten that far into the details to know that for either types of those systems, if it's going to require a bigger-sized conduit, if I was just to take a guess at it, they're going to put in a two- or three-inch conduit, which is going to be more than adequately, adequately sized to provide either or. But that, those are some of those details we're going to have to be confident about as we, we put together the development.
So it's conduit, but not energized wiring?
Correct. This is conduit only. Yeah, very similar to when a, a new development or subdivision goes in, and you've got the dry utilities, as we refer to them, so phone, cable, things like that, where they put in multiple, multiple conduit banks. That's exactly what we're talking about here. Those, those conduits may lay empty for, for years without being used, especially in developments based on a provider that gave conduit to the developer to install for them, and the service never gets used.
Thank you. Two things, that's the type of thing that we do with traffic signals for intersections that will need them eventually, but they don't when the work is being done to rebuild the street. Marion and 34th is one that I remember. The other one was, I concur with Commissioner Verba, about 40% and 25%. I think it is. It's easier to comply with state law if you mirror state law.
Yeah. All right, next slide. Okay, so when we're looking at, when parking is provided, one space or 5% of employee-use parking spaces, whichever, great, and, sorry, back up, we're talking about car and van pool parking. Our proposed standards would be that when it's, when parking is provided, that one space or 5% of employee parking spaces would be designated for car or van pool. And then should car or van pool parking be required for non-residential development, including additions, when parking is not provided? So just to, to kind of back up a little bit and define what we're talking about when we say designating something car or van pool parking. This is not a different space, it's same-size space, it's just a sign that they'll put on it to designate it as car or van pool. So they don't, other than putting the sign there, they don't have to do anything special for, for the space. But it does, you know, it's a little bit of honor system, because we don't do parking, you know, we're not going to go out and enforce this in, in private parking spots if somebody parks their, you know, small, you know, little hybrid in a, in a van pool spot. But it's generally, they'd be required to designate at least the space. So the, the question, well, the question is, when it's provided, we're recommending that at least one of the spaces or 5% of employee-use parking spaces are designated for car or van pool.
What are you defining as a carpool? Two people in one car, three people in one car?
To be honest, I, as far as these standards are concerned, I, I would say anything more than one person. I, I'd have to look into exactly if the state has a, a definition that we're trying to hit here, but I can certainly look into that.
Okay, but not necessarily, I was just curious what we're calling a carpool.
See, because usually the van pools have a wheelchair. So they open the side, and then they take the wheelchair out, so they need a lot more room, and the van spaces are about twice as big because of that. So you couldn't just, you know, pull into a regular spot.
Yeah, this would be for van pool spots, not, you know, we've already kind of talked about the ADA component, this would be for that, that van pool, carpool situation.
Yeah, so the ADA spot would be bigger than, for like the vans that have the wheelchairs? Okay.
And then the, the next part of that question is, you know, should car pool, van pool parking be required for non-residential development, including additions, when parking is not provided? So similar to the ADA discussion we had, if somebody, in the rare case where a development, a new development is done, or an addition is done, and somebody doesn't provide any parking, should we require that they provide a carpool or a van pool spot?
I think if, I think if you're going to carpool or van pool, that you should have a little reward, you know?
I agree, I think it should be something marked. I think it's orderly to have something marked.
Do you know how long it's been since the 5% figure has been in effect? Is that something that's been a long time, or is that a recent figure, do you know?
I couldn't answer that question.
I would imagine that, that if, if, if you want to encourage a larger, you know, or employee lots to, to, to do this, I would think that more than 5% might be something to, to shoot for, just, you know, to create that environment where people would, would respond to it and would, and would do that, would double up and triple up in their, in their commuting. I don't know.
I'm not sure that having more spaces necessarily encourages more people to do that. I think in the past, for example, they have narrowed parking spaces as a way to try to encourage people not to drive big vehicles. And I think the result is you just end up with a lot of frustrated people cramming their big vehicle into these little narrow spots. So I think just because we provide something doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be made use of.
Change is difficult, and, and social engineering is something that people start talking about when they perceive that they're being made to do something that interferes with their freedom to choose. So I guess we always have to walk that line, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and to be clear, the, you know, what, what we're talking about here is that the state guidance is, is that the, the 5% is a state guidance, that when parking is provided, provided 5% of that should be carpool or van pool designated. So that, that, that's going to remain, you know, the question is, is when, when there's, should it be required for non-residential development, including addition, when they're not proposing to provide any parking? So somebody's got a, a brand-new building that they're proposing not to provide parking, or they're doing addition and they're not proposing to provide any new parking, should we require them for, to include van pool or carpool?
So I, I'm fine with this language, I'm fine with the 5% in the one space, and I do not think that we should require it if there is no parking. Because again, like, what kind of business is not going to provide employee parking? If they aren't, then maybe they have a bunch of employees that are riding bikes, and that's just great. So I don't, I don't think we need to make them have a space for van pool or carpool if they aren't providing parking for their employees.
And generally, the, while the, the recommendation wasn't on this slide, you know, the, the draft code language that we've started on is, is headed that direction of when parking is provided. Wouldn't be to reach in if somebody wasn't provided parking to make them create this one space that's carpool, similar to what we did with. similar to what we did with ADA.
Yeah. When parking is provided, I think having one or 5% is a good approach.
So we adopt these, in the future, a lot of our language is going to say when parking is provided, or when this is provided. Housekeeping.
That's correct. So this is, this portion of what we're doing tonight is kind of guidance. Our next step, well, we'll talk about next steps. And I've got one more slide, I think, and then we'll give it to, or two. But we will come back with actual draft language to the planning commission to kind of hash through the finer details. And then they'll provide a recommendation, which we'll bring back to council. So, okay. Our next slide. All right. So one of the things with CPEC is to encourage converting parking into other uses. So existing unused parking, part of this is to encourage the redevelopment of those spaces. And the way that it's set up is when parking is converted to uses other than, well, it's outright allowed without having to make big changes. If they're converting it to bike or transit facilities, but in cases where that's, they're converting it to something else, the question is, is how much of that remaining parking area should be brought up to city standards? And we've got a couple of options here. One of them is all of the remaining parking being brought up to the new standard, which would be 40, yeah, 50% EV charging capacity, as well as the ADA requirements. The other option would be an equal area. The amount of parking area be removed, or the size of the addition. Another option, three, require incremental improvements per the non-conforming development standards we currently have in ADC 2.330, which is 10% of the improvement value over 150. So it gives a little bit of pad. So if you had a development, a redevelopment of an existing parking area, and the overall cost of that redevelopment was less than $150,000, they wouldn't have to do anything as far as improving the remaining parking that's left. If it goes over that 150, then 10% of that construction value needs to be geared towards improving the remaining parking to the new standards. Or there's option four, which is setting a unique threshold, if any, and a priority list for redevelopment of non-conforming parking areas. And this is probably one of the harder ones because there's a lot of different options here to look at. You know, as far as a staff recommendation on this, it's, we're recommending no incremental improvements be required to non-conforming developments when bicycling, transit-oriented facilities are provided, to encourage those. As far as new construction in non-conforming parking lots, they'd be considered non-conforming development, require incremental improvements in line with our existing incremental improvements under option three. And we can certainly talk about the particulars of what that code would look like, if you guys would like to. I mean, this one is a little bit more difficult to kind of envision, I suppose.
So, oh, thank you. This immediately makes me think of the parking lots that are non-conforming now that are gravel and have been allowed to be gravel until X happens. This looks like X to me. So that, what do we require? What triggers an existing gravel parking lot to becoming an impervious service up to city standards? What does a property owner have to initiate to make that happen? To require that to happen, I should say.
That is a, that is a difficult question, Councilor Smith.
This is a difficult issue.
When we talk about what happens today when we consider existing gravel parking lots, which may or may not exist. If a new development comes in, they do an addition, or they build a new building and go through a site plan, they're going to be required to improve that parking area. If we're looking at the code as it exists today, based on the number of spaces that they're required by code to have, they would be required to pave those areas. Because the city does not allow for unpaved permanent parking facilities. There's some provisions in the code for gravel parking lots on temporary uses. There's certainly, I think we can all point to gravel parking lots that are around the city that have predated, either predated our code or have shown up. So to your question, it's new development would trigger the requirement to bring that up to a standard. When we're, when we're looking at this, when we talk about if you're converting an existing parking lot, so say out at the mall where you've got a large amount of, I'm going to refer to it as the Sears parking lot because I'm old and I remember when Sears was there and loved it very much. But when you think about a redevelopment of that parking area, kind of the options that we have would be if, say, if somebody wanted to come in and redevelop that area. So our options are if they put in a, you know, 10,000 square foot store, that they would have to redevelop all the parking in the area. That's option one, as we see on the sheet. Or if it was a 10,000 square foot building, that they would have to redevelop to the new parking standards, the EV charging, the carpool, the ADA, an equal amount of area. Or require incremental improvements per our non-conforming development standards, which is based on that trigger once you get over $150,000 of total improvement. 10% of that improvement value needs to be directed towards improving the parking lot. Or some other unique threshold that we'd want to set, which is under option four. The proposed code language that we've kind of started to draft here would be conversion or elimination of off-street parking to other uses is subject to site plan review, which they would have to go through site plan review. As part of this process, as part of the new development, you know, they're changing circulation, you're adding parking, you have to go through a land use for that. We'd be looking, that's kind of what we're looking for direction is what standard do we want to use? As far as, we haven't provided a direct staff recommendation here. For me, it would seem that option three would be probably the easiest because it lines up with everything else in our code. Option two is not bad either. So it's really direction from this group of what you'd like to see.
And since we're eliminating parking sort of period, not requiring minimum parking, it's probably, there's an easier solution than what I'm thinking of, right? I raised the difficult question. But if we're not requiring parking to be provided, then maybe I should have kept my mouth shut.
Yeah, you've uncovered something that it starts, that's where it starts, your brain starts, at least mind does, starts to struggle with this. It's okay, you've got a new development that's redeveloping an old parking lot. But in that new development, we don't require parking. So what should the requirement be for them to update any of the remaining parking? Is it, is it nothing? Is it an incremental percentage as far as based on the size of the improvement? Is it the standard like we see in our non-conforming development standards? Or is it something else? I don't know that there is a perfect answer here because the response of a developer could be, well, I'm not going to provide any parking. They're still going to be required to go through site plan because that's, because they're going to eliminate parking stalls, which is going to change some circulation patterns. So they're going to have to reconfigure some of that, no matter what. The question is, is are we going to require that they bring some of that other parking up to than the new standard? That's the question for the group.
So I think that if they, you know, we don't have a requirement for parking, but we do have requirements for if you do provide parking, which if you're making updates to your property, then I think we should include requirement to update some of the parking. I don't mind number three. The only concern I have, and have you had any pushback from developers on that value? Because that doesn't seem very predictable in a fluctuating market. Because 150 could be nothing one day and then maybe a lot the next day. I don't know if that is adjusted as, you know, often as it maybe should. But that was my original thinking when looking at that, was that that wouldn't be very predictable for developers. But if it's in line with what we already have, I see that that would be a lot easier to just adopt that.
So the $150,000 number that you see there is a result of several month-long processes as we reworked our non-conforming code about two years ago. It went through a much-needed and fairly substantial overhaul. And that, that number used to be a lot lower. So that was based on input from the development group, well, developers around the area and the public. We raised that number up to make, to make things a little bit easier. Because if it, I think it was down at like $40,000 before, which was, yeah, it was challenging.
Is the idea that an impervious surface is considered to be improvement and to a standard, into a code, do you think that idea will continue into the future for all development and planning and so forth? Or, I mean, I know there are, there are surfaces used, you know, in some applications that are, allow for drainage and swales and so forth. And in some parts of the country, gravel is just fine. If you've ever been to Santa Fe, that's what they do. So do you see any kind of a future change in the, you know, due to the fact that impervious surfaces have created a lot of runoff and a lot of kind of widespread problems? Is that going to change?
Well, I mean, that's a great question. It's not really linked to what we're dealing with here. But I, I will say that there are lots of options for developers that are out there that are not all impervious surfaces. So there's pervious pavers, there's pervious concrete, pervious asphalt. That does reduce that runoff component. We actually saw a development going over off of Queen that most people would never know if they drove past it. The storage facility that was out there, that was all done with pervious pavement. So their drainage system, that entire parking area or drive area actually infiltrates through the asphalt into their drainage system, which is pretty unique. So there's lots of options. It's not really necessarily tied to this, per se, but it's something, it's a great question.
I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, what, can you hear? Can you hear me?
That's better.
Thank you. It's a different microphone. Not sure which of these, you know, options is the best option. But it seems that if you are repurposing a parking lot and you are still access to the parking lot, that your repurposing would be benefited by the updated parking that you are still utilizing to some extent. And I don't know, they're still going to be parking there. So I think that's the rules that we should probably follow unless they removed all parking in that area. That's my opinion.
So I guess what I would suggest, because this one is kind of interesting, is that staff will come up with some language that we'll bring back to the planning commission. You'll kind of look at some scenarios and talk to some of our colleagues in the development world and get their opinion. I see, you know, Dave Reese is here, who's a great resource that I go to quite often for opinions. And we can bring something back when we come to planning commission for folks to evaluate on the code side, if that sounds okay to everybody. We're generally kind of leaning between one of the options, one through three, understanding there's a, it's a pretty wide, wide gap there of what could be done, but.
That was all I was going to ask you to talk, have you talked to the development community about it?
Yep.
Because I mean, there's 12 people up here plus people listening. I personally, for me, if you're going to put a new building or repurpose a building and bring it up to code, you know, bring it up to a new standard, then your parking should go with it. So that's just me.
Yeah. And part of the challenge with this particular one is, as we talk about new parking is not required. So what is, when you're repurposing that?
Won't the market drive the developer with no, they're expecting, how many repeat businesses they're expecting? How many ADA compliance? Because like for my office, I have two ADA spots. There's only like 12 spots, 15 spots total, because I work with seniors. So they put a new ramp in for me, which is ADA compliant.
Yep. So we absolutely can work with some of our colleagues to see if, and come up with something that makes sense. And we'll bring that back when we come to planning commission, so.
Excellent.
Next slide, Caitlin. Okay. So parking maximums. So as no parking will be mandated or required, so in the ES, HD, DMU, CB, LE, WF, and future climate-friendly areas, the current minimums would be the maximum allowed. So our current minimum standards would be the new maximum. So we're not, we're not taking anything away. They can still put in as much parking as they could today. So most of the time, those minimums, as we talked in our last meeting, we hear from most developers like, well, we don't use that much parking. And as Anne had mentioned in the last one, there were only two or three sites in all of Albany that went over that minimum. And that was, I think, the Lowe's, Costco, and Walmart. So the existing minimum, as it says today, would be the new maximum. Parking maximums for development in all other zones outside of the ones listed up here would be 130% over that current minimum. So that's going to be most of everything that's outside of downtown. It's going to have basically, the maximum parking they can provide would be 130% more than the minimum we have today. And that 130% number comes from that prior discussion that we had, which said when Lowe's overparked their site, they did it at about 130% over what the minimum was. Same thing for Costco, same thing for Walmart.
So I'm looking, you know, being here 28 years, going on 29, one parking lot that stands out for me as a huge waste of space is the mall, especially those back areas. Only time I've seen that back area full was when they had the three-on-three tournaments there. I mean, right now, I could say I drive through there a couple of times a week, maybe five cars. That's a spot that can be redeveloped and put another store or something there because the mall is diminishing as far as the number of stores that are in there. So I think that over 130%, that's high. And the only time you really see that is when there's holidays or shopping discounts and things like that, perceived discounts. I don't know. I would have to talk to developers about what their thoughts are on something that size.
And generally, the number that we've provided here, the 130%, in the next steps, as we work through the Climate Friendly Equal Communities piece, and Ron can talk about this more if we need to, is we're going to have to provide some give. So if we've got it set a little bit high here, when we update our TSP, we can bring that number down a little bit. Generally, it's not to say that they have to park this many. It's really providing the opportunity. In the mall, while I tend to agree with you, is, especially back in that kind of old Sears area, is highly underutilized. If I draw back in my memory banks, you know, 50. you know, 15, 20 years ago, when there was a lot more hair on top of this head and it was a different color, those parking lots actually had a lot of cars in there. And a lot of that is driven based on the uses that are there today. It's no longer a big box retailer that Sears was that a lot of folks went to. It's, I think there's a hobby place in there and a large amount of it's, I think, still vacant. So it's, that's driven based on the use just isn't back there. If that was a, you know, if Target were in that space, then we would see all that, that parking lot would probably be used up. But I think there's opportunities there for redevelopment. You're 100% right on that. But the 130 is not something that says they're going to provide that. It's only providing the developer the option to go up that high and setting an upper cap.
Thank you.
I don't know if you're going to cover this in the next slide, but I have a question about the shared parking. Is that next for max?
I don't think that we covered, or I covered shared parking in our slides, but we can certainly talk about it if you'd like.
So in the shared parking section, this is on, what page is this? I don't know what page this is. But you talk about, "The city encourages parking facilities to be shared by users on adjacent parcels. Maximum parking standards apply to the use where the property is located." Is that maximum standard the max of the one building plus the max of the other building? Or is that the, like a max of a shared version? You know what I mean? That was my question. Like, do you add the two and that's the max or?
And I think that's a great question that I will get an answer to and that probably needs a little bit more investigating because understand where you're headed there. If you had two parcels and one of them, you know, was, didn't have a lot of space for parking and they could be artificially limited based on their parcel size. So we can look at that a little bit more before Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have another question, Director. If a builder, like the people here at the Sears, that lot back there at the mall, if they wanted, like somebody downtown, would they want to lease that parking? Could we allow that?
Yeah, it's private parking. If somebody, you know, if the mall wanted to lease that space out to somebody for shared parking, you know, currently, the way our development code is structured when we consider shared parking, like say if, and most of this is all going away as we eliminate the requirement for parking. But in the code as it exists today, if you had a site that you were developing and you didn't have enough area on your site to provide all the required parking, because right now we have required parking. Well, actually, we don't. But in those scenarios, you had an option to provide shared parking. So you could enter into an agreement with a parcel next door to meet your parking requirement. Now, that shared agreement required Planning Commission approval. All of that would no longer be required.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question too, since we kind of jumped in the slides to the large parking lots for the different options for the CFEC rules. So option A, they're showing for the solar panels with the capacity of 0.5 kilowatts. So I had shared some calculations that I did previously. So a place like Safeway, which has about 97 parking spaces currently, as an example, that would be about 137 solar cells. So that is not a feasible thing that most companies would probably consider doing, especially at the larger scale. So I had made some suggestions to like Anne and others. And I see that there is an adjustment here for, the company could pay $1,500 per parking space for a fund. But I see that the staff input, because of resources, that could be challenging. So another consideration, I'm wondering if there's open discussion for, you know, say 15% of the provided parking be for solar energy. So it helps us move into a greener future. I don't know if we can, if this is a good time to talk about that.
Yeah. So Counsel Verba, or sorry, Commissioner Verba has moved on to the next slide, which I think is okay, Caitlin.
I wasn't sure just because we kind of jumped.
Yeah. So this is really more of an informational slide. This is based right out of the OARs, which requires us to provide one of these three options. With, on option A, it, this is right per state code. So I did see that you sent over some calculations to Anne. I hadn't had a chance to go through those yet. And we certainly can take a look at them. But under option A, it does provide, the state allows for us to develop an in lieu of fee. Currently with staffing levels and the time that we've got until we need to have this adopted, there really isn't enough time to kind of develop a fund and where the monies would go and how they would be spent. Certainly something that staff will look at in the future to provide this option for in lieu of. So to your point, for a development that's going to provide a large amount of parking and in that parking standard, they opt with, because they have to comply with one of these options. If one of those options is solar panels, that it's not feasible, is what I'm hearing, to do that much, that we provide an option for an in lieu of fee. That's something that will certainly, as we kind of move forward, look at developing that. We use in lieu of fees for things like stormwater quality facilities right now. They're used pretty sparingly. There has to be really good reasons why somebody's going to use it in lieu of. But it's not, by not including it here doesn't mean we're not going to consider it. It's just we don't have, at the moment, enough time to put something in place.
Sure. And yeah, I understand that doing the in lieu is definitely going to have its own challenges. So that's why I was just hoping to find, you know, for the future of having, you know, a certain percentage. So then it would be a lot easier to, it would require less resources from staff to be able to implement something like that. There's just a percentage for the standard that the city adopts.
But I'd be, tomorrow when we meet, I'd like to give, maybe get a little bit more information on that and get a better understanding. That'd be, that'd be great.
On the trees, are the trees going to be deciduous or they're going to be evergreen?
Good question.
That is a great question. I'm, I would have to look into that to be. It's going to be based on a coverage standard. So just generally, I'm guessing based on a canopy is probably going to be deciduous, but I'll have to check.
Because it says continuous cover. It won't be continuous if they're deciduous. And it's also going to be a mess, you know, with all the leaves. Because, but anyway. And then the evergreens, most of them are tall and narrow. So they don't really have a base, you know, to give shade. Zedley's the one that I've seen. So I was just wondering, what kind of trees are going to be covering all year long?
Yeah, I can do some more research into that for you. Okay. And so that is all of my slides. And I will now turn it over to Beth Freelander, who's going to run through our comprehensive plan policies in support of CFECs.
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners and Counselors. Caitlin, could you still bring that PowerPoint back up? So close. And for reference, my slides will start on slide nine. Perfect. So as a part of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities effort, we want to make sure that our comprehensive plan policies and goals support the Climate Friendly and Equitable Community rules and also are aligned with these code changes and recommendations that we're making. So we took a look at our comprehensive plan and looked for what policies and goals do we have that already support these rules? And then where do we have gaps? And where are there areas that maybe we could strengthen it? So it's kind of more directly tied to the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules. So, next slide. So some of the policies we do need to have are around the transportation pieces. And so eliminating the parking minimums, encouraging shared parking, and supporting the electric vehicle charging infrastructure, those are areas where we do need to have policies in our comprehensive plan that show that we're in alignment with the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules. And I just put the very brief overview of these policies and goals because they're all in more detail in your packet. And so are there any questions or concerns about the transportation policies? They're very straightforward, really lining up with what changes are being made in the code. Great. So then for the urbanization goals and policies, we wanted to just add some goals in that really speak to kind of the intent of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules, which is to encourage developments that allow people to get around by foot or by transit or bike and not be as reliant on automobiles. And so for that, we just have encouraging those compact developments that are mixed use and discouraging large-scale service parking. And then for the policies, those really just speak to the goals. You know, encouraging conversion of parking, encouraging large commercial developments to have multiple stories so they're not sprawling. They're more compact. Developing the parking maximums, which we have that code language for too. And then looking at our distribution of free parking and how can we encourage shared parking? Or what are the mechanisms for that? And then also, as a part of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, we know we need to have these climate-friendly areas. And so we wanted to have in our comprehensive plan that we will designate those and the purpose that those will serve. All right, next slide. And so then for the housing, again, we just want this to kind of align with what the intent is, that there's higher-density residential and higher-density mixed-use developments that are nearby transit so that people have options and opportunities to use transit rather than using their car. And then for the natural resources, this really speaks to the intent of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities part that is about reducing pollution, especially related to automobiles. And so adopting some standards around to reduce runoff from impervious surfaces and limiting unnecessary increases to impervious surfaces are kind of some recommendations of policies that we might consider. So very straightforward, really just keeping our comprehensive plan aligned with the rules and then also with the code updates. Are there any questions? All right.
Go ahead.
I don't really have a question. It's just that from what I've been listening to, so far as the walkable and bikeable, in this weather, it's going to be to a minimum. You know, and even in the summer, when it gets really, really hot, it's going to be a minimum. So it's just going to have to be something that's day by day.
Yeah. If only we could control the weather, right? But the best we can do is try to put in place the things that we can control to encourage biking and walking. And hopefully, that means that when it is possible, people can use those modes.
Thank you, Beth. So I know I promised six o'clock. We're running a little bit longer than that, but we're almost done here. So now down to just questions and suggestions. Can you back up one slide, Caitlin? So next steps is we'll be working on additional public outreach, which will be probably through the web and potentially some roundtables. We're scheduled for public hearings on code updates. So staff will be taking the input we've received tonight, developing development code updates, comprehensive plan code updates or text updates, bringing those to Planning Commission on May 1st. And then depending on recommendations we get from Planning Commissions, that will come back to council on May 24th with our kind of deadline of June 30th, 2023 adoption for everything.
The Planning Commission meetings, the hearings are scheduled in 2023, is that correct?
Well, if we could, if I had a time machine, we'd be already done.
We've already done this.
Appreciate that.
So we walk back in time.
2023. So. And then next slide, Caitlin. So this is just a general overview of kind of where we're at right now. We're sitting at, in the overall CFAC or Climate Friendly Equitable Communities process. We're in the March 31, well, right after March 31, 2023, the EV and electrical capacity, all the new rules will go into effect. So we're in that parking reform Part B piece right now, which is the piece that we're working on. And then you'll be seeing more and more of us as we continue to work on our climate-friendly areas and completing in our studies of that. So you'll be seeing more of Anne and I as we move forward. And that is all unless anybody has additional questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
We pay for our streets with gas taxes currently, correct? We pay for our streets with gas taxes. Is that correct? At least some part of that?
As my understanding is not my area of expertise, but I believe he has a portion of that.
So the question I have for probably the staff during a council meeting is, these mandates to not have any gas-powered vehicles by 2035, it frightens me. I'd probably be dead by then. But how are we going to pay for our streets if everybody goes to electric? It won't happen. I'm just saying that, you know, these mandates, you're still going to have a bunch of used gas cars. But as that number starts to diminish, how are we going to pay for our roads?
So while I'm not an expert in this particular area, as I understand, the 2035 deadline is that.
No new gas, right?
It's, well, for certain types of vehicles. So you'll still be able to buy your F-350 so you can tow your 30-foot travel trailer or things like that. So there's still be selling gas. No other, there's a new tax that comes out for electrical vehicles. I don't have that answer. But it's a great question. It really is. And there might be people in this room that might have that answer, who are hiding in the back that may or may not want to come up and talk about it. But I think it's certainly something that will have to be addressed.
Because the ones that are presently using the roads now, using EV are not paying towards those road repairs. Other than probably registration, but that goes to the state. Hey, Beth.
Well, I really appreciate everybody hanging in there with us and giving us some guidance. Like, say, your next steps will be Planning Commission and then we'll be back with council.
Do we have any public comments? Okay. That's okay. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
No address anymore.
No address anymore.
No address anymore.
Your name.
It's dangerous, yeah.
Very true. Janet Steele, President of the Albany Area Chamber of Commerce. And my comments will be brief. I've been watching, been at your different hearings, et cetera, and will continue to be. I want you to know that there are currently two lawsuits specifically challenging this rulemaking by DCLD, one by private business and industry groups and another brought by over a dozen cities and counties. There is a great possibility that the courts will throw out the rules, making them null and void, and/or remand them back to DLCD to start over again. We're wondering why you are going for, and Matthew and I have had conversations. So I appreciate what he's told me and I appreciate knowing that you're not going to adopt these till December 24. But there's a lot of information that's not out. The hearings are not done. The courts have not ruled. You're putting a lot of time and money and effort into something that very likely is not going to happen. Anyway, we're asking that you don't go forward and let the courts settle their issue before you go forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments, or any comments from the commissioner or council for what was stated? Go ahead, Matilda.
Yeah, I just want to say that I have heard what Janet Steele just said. I've heard that same information, and I think that there is wisdom, and at least considering what she said, that we should see how things play out. I don't think anyone's in a big hurry. I understand why you're working on it. I do agree that you're spending an awful lot of resources and time, and these lawsuits are real, and I think that there are considerations that, you know, maybe we should see how things play out. You know, they give you deadlines, and I understand that, that's why you're working. Makes sense. But we have no idea what the future holds and how things are going to play out. So I just say, let's be willing to use wisdom on both sides. You're using wisdom to plan and prepare, let's use some wisdom with regard to what is currently taking place, that we should all be aware of, and have, you know, that's going to have, it could potentially have a huge amount of bearing on all of this. So let's just be aware of that. I'm glad you brought it publicly to our attention, and I think we need to just be a little balanced. That's all. Again, I appreciate the work. I appreciate why you're doing what you're doing, because the state is giving you deadlines and mandates and all this stuff. But I am someone who can see why people would stand up to the state with regard to all these things, and want to get some things settled, and have questions, and not just, the state said so, okay, let's do it. I think that we have a right to do things in the best possible way, and not just because someone makes some decision and says you must. Maybe I'm a rebel, I don't know. But I just, I'm just advocating for balance, and I appreciate, again, that you put that on the record. Because if anyone didn't know that, I think you all do, about the lawsuits.
What exactly is in the lawsuit?
Matthew?
Just, yeah.
Commissioner McGee, Councilor McGee.
I'd say, but to piggyback off that, while I understand we are spending a lot of time on a lot of things, and obviously you have to do that, but I also think that it's a lot of work and value in spending time and being proactive rather than reactive, because if you already have something drafted up, it's not hard to modify or change if things come down. So I just want to say thank you for spending the time, because I know it's not easy. One. Two, I didn't see anything about the parking structures. I thought that we talked about that in our 23rd meeting.
I'm not sure if we've got anything for actual, well, there's some discussion about if any of the standards would apply to people that, or developments that provided parking structures. It was, it was in regard to if the standards would apply to them or not. It didn't, we basically weren't going to punish people for providing parking in a structure. Great. So the, and I'm going off of memory here, so I believe it was that if there, a lot of the standards wouldn't apply to parking that was provided within a structure. So, you know, as we look at trying to densify a lot of this stuff, parking structures are not chewing up massive amounts of real estate, they're confined, so that a lot of the requirements wouldn't apply to the parking provided within a structure.
I thought it was something like, if they wanted to have a parking structure, and they could pay the money or not pay the money, it was something like that that came about. And I was like, go ahead.
I can go back and look at the notes and get back to you on that.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Any more comments from the public? All righty. Well, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting at 6:28 PM. Thank you.